Twenty twenty three. Need a motion to accept the minutes of the May third.
Or accept the minutes.
Motion be second. Second. Motion second for discussion. Follow all please.
Pete Joe Atkinson.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, Angela Hawken. And Castro, Matt Musta. Alan Kern.
All right.
I motion here. I know correspondence, I vote all business. A three forty one A she's lead solar project two hundred north among the road. Be more sense. CB police four four LLC affiliate. Clear that energy systems. Public hearing. Very much.
Town Horsehead's planning board notice a public hearing, please take notice that the planning board of the town of Horsehead, New York will hold a public hearing. On Wednesday, July fifth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. At the town hall, one fifty Y Gant Road. Horsehead on request of Sons of Nee Way LLC and Touch and Tech for the Sheasley Solar Projects. Zero one dash two dash forty seven. Right one two. This application is open for inspection at the office of the town clerk at one fifty Y Gant Road, Horsehead, New York. During regular office hours, people wishing to appear at the hearing may do so in person or by attorney or other representation. Communications and writing relative thereto may comply with the court. Or at such hearing. Joe Atkinson, co-chairman, planning board. June ninth, twenty twenty three, published one time in the Omar Star Gazette on June twenty third, twenty twenty three. I'll open the public hearing with regard to anyone who wish to comment with regard to the solar project. Please note that the planning board does not take part in the public hearing. If you have a comment, please come up and make it. You'll step forward to the podium. In stage, your name and address upon being recognized, make your statement. If you have a question, state the question and it will be answered after the public hearing is closed. Anyone wish to make a comment, please, anyone at all? Anyone? Motion is in order to pose a public hearing.
The motion, all my the most opposed the public hearing.
Second. Second. In the second call of all.
Joe Atkinson.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, Angela Hawken, and Castro, Matt Musta.
Hi.
Alan Kern.
All right.
I motion here. Um, so into our two seeker on this.
Speaker.
Okay. The call represents.
We're right there. So they got any questions? I want the podium. We did the plan with us, you want us to shut that up or? Sure. There we see. Um. Do you want me to do introductions again or just jump like this? But she didn't.
No question on public carry.
Okay. Uh. So. Okay.
Um, we had provided a. A summary sheet. Or you can copy that. And what? And we did for. One of the project. Everybody. We made this sentence.
Yeah, we.
Right.
Okay.
What's happening with us? Senior. Both times.
See out there. It's like sort of a hand filled out. On two. We've been brought here with transportation to submit his property. Probably.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I sent, I sent it to Matt. Yeah, I'll show you what it looks like. So here's one answer that I'm actually getting through that. I want to be a second.
Have a new tripod.
I got like thinking. That's what I don't get about it.
All right, please. All right, let's start it as. First thing is impact on land. What was actually mean involved construction and then physical operation of a lane surface. The whole site. So we're going to go through and answer questions at each. Always actually may involve destruction on rain depth of one day that it's less than three. It would say in seventy three point five. That would be. Or is it actually may involve slopes greater fifteen percent? So it'd be. Small impact. Beating to the bed to. Construction and project. Post construction be involved. Construction on my head of my bed of rocks exposed over the white feed system down the surface. Three six beats. What was actually may involve excavation, removal, worth of thousand tons of natural material. Built now. Was actually may involve construction that continues for more than one year on multiple phases. One. Based on the question here. He was actually may result in increased erosion of weather from physical disturbance or vegetation capable. Including treatment by herbicides. Nowhere.
Right, so no. Oh, the expense, sort of yes, because we'll be doing some work, minimal excavation, but as you mentioned, we have.
As the speed is prepared, I'll be addressed.
Some other things that area has got foreign on, you guys actually have to do their kind of grade that out a little bit and plan. And for our. Yeah. You know what I'm saying, it's.
We, we end up receiving it. Yeah.
Yeah, probably a wildflower.
Yeah. But there may be, I mean, something that you get, something that grow diesel underneath.
Yeah, typically when it's some, some studies that serve during construction and we, you know, we go and stuff and pre-seed to make sure it's.
Yeah, but they land right now, it's all on the till and all that, so you'll have. But it has to work out.
Yeah, they'll, they'll keep your speed to the middle until it's eighty percent.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so they'll, they'll be on it because they want to get rid of that prevent that.
And also, you know, depending on when we actually start construction, it may eventually to, to, we eventually, you know, it's all.
Right.
I don't know what schedule for stopping the plan application. Probably going to be a period of time when we take control of the site to begin the construction process, but everything. Hopefully ground stabilizes.
Oh, it's still up there and a tough time of product for all that. So.
Yeah, we'll. Break it or something, but. Yeah, I mean, we've, if, if. If necessary, we have to, you know, compact that we were, you know, like obviously building our drive given there a lot of way down guard. Um, but, but mostly equipment's on track, so. Okay.
Think I'm being, what we're not correct. I don't, I've known, like, just ask you a question. So. It's forty eight per plot.
About sixty four.
Sixty four. So, for instance, you have a fire in the back.
Yeah.
How you gonna get to it?
So the panels are about, so on this side, they're about thirty five feet apart. On this side, they're probably about twelve feet apart. So you can get a vehicle down through the rows, but we keep an open path around whole upside.
So that open path will be maintained in the winter when there's snow on the ground?
No, no, because we wouldn't, there's, there's no occupied structures or anything like that. Making access.
So when the panels catch on fire with it, it's up or no?
There's nothing plus the one handles, they don't have fire.
Or electric, right?
They've got wires connected to that, but there, there's no combustible portion of them, they're either still.
They, they shut them off.
Yeah, you could have an electric shore that you would. That throw. Breaker to cut off the electric, so who does that? Um, that would either be a stat number or fifty department.
We typically only maintain emergency access to the.
So when you say it's that number, then somebody's there on site all the time. But we have, we'll have staff that will be able to respond. Uh, if there's an issue, but there's twenty four seven monitoring, right, if there's an issue or alarm will go up. Uh, and so we'll be dispatched.
Look at, if you had grass, maybe you need those panels, that's like saw and. Last thing you was in there. You have an arcing of the electric. I would define it on getting between those roads.
So we maintain the grass and bode, we cut it, it shouldn't grow up.
Going twice a year.
Uh, typically at least four times. I would say no, no less twice here, but, but yeah, no, no less twice here, but typically we go more than.
Because the glass.
I just. Secret. Right.
Okay.
Um, that number two forty five years forward, ready? We're not going to go in there. We're going to wait for management to show up. The one that have a, the ex- master, you know, right? Something like this, so we're going to give away from it. Get there, get any other number you can call. Talking about shutdown. So it's. We're not going to maintain the roads. Um, going on the G proposed action is or may be located within the coastal two rows area. Impact and geological features.
Yeah.
The badness surface water, yes.
There is a stream that goes right to the.
So number one, new water butt. No, whenever, no retention button or anything like that. Um. One off. You can. I'm forgetting. Grudging. Materials, wetland or wetlands there.
There, there are wetlands, but we're.
We're saying outside. The football buffer. Right. Was actually being well constructed with Jordan, a freshwater or entitled well and. Better banks of any other water body.
Yeah, because we're disturbing the land during construction. Presumption is that that could happen, but yes, yes.
So being, being no small. Actually may create turbidity in water body. Either from upward erosion runoff or just during bottoms, settlements.
Same answer.
Yeah. It's called. On our good speech, any turbidity along. Could think. Was actually construction or more intakes for withdrawal of water. Was actually mean construction, more or outfalls discharge wastewater.
In fact, this project stops. When is currently.
Was that actually because solar erosion or otherwise creating a source of stormwater discharge and may lead to incel-tation or other degradation of receiving. Our bodies. In this is covered under speeding. Was actually may affect water quality, many water bodies within or downstream of the site. Or was actually. Again, this cover of the speeds preventing the speed regulations. Was actually involve application of pesticide or besides. In or around the water body. We won't have them, no, no. Was actually may require construction of new or space and existing wastewater treatment facilities. So better. Better than real water.
This would be a no under four because we don't.
Well, there's no water. Back that plenty was kept to five. Over there, hundred years, five hundred years, far away. The forty. It's. So that would be a bad. For. That I got air.
No emissions.
Stay very good experience. Quiet. That's animals.
This would be a. Yes, because we are just in between these trees.
Well, was actually may cause reduction in population loss, means true individual race threat. Or dangerous species.
Yeah. There are.
Niners, niners hardwood shade. Right. Was actually the result of reduction or degradation of any habitat used by a rare danger species. It's listed in New York State, if I'm registered. It doesn't. Now, the secret part of it. Other was actually. They caused reduction in population. Loss of individual, any species or special concern. Their conservation need is listed by the New York State. Let's say. We have to keep our. Everything. That's. So far, so.
Where is the national money line? No.
Action waves. Is standing interfering with nesting breeding. Origin. Injuries may have it. Damage species in. Right inside. It's a corner.
Correct.
These odds may tell. Yeah, all that. And action does not. Comprehension. Or is. Rest. What was action, commercial industry, recreation, or any property, so precisely that's the. In back and they go through the facility. Yes. The boss actually mean impact solar classification. So one through four, I'm wanting to classify.
So I've just been, you have just there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we go there agricultural lands and they, some of them meet the criteria for, so I think one good floors. But again, all of our work is being done consistent with nice damn regulations for solar projects, nice damn things. Very specific guidelines for doing solar projects in agricultural land. And one of these they stress is just basically don't remove topsoil. Um, and also leave a gap underneath your fence so you can maintain more. Passage for a smaller end. So.
There's also specifications that they commissioning to ensure that. Uh, it would be begun to be used for agriculture again once, once the product to move.
So what they want to make sure is it's not lost forever. So in this case, we have mechanism to decommission the facility. And we've not got any to degrade the ability for it to produce across.
Thank you, okay. Actually may sever cross or otherwise limit access to agricultural only. Drop one into those. Uh, actually may result in excavation or combustion of soil. Or file out the active agricultural. Was actually may conversely convert agricultural land to non- agricultural uses. Either one of them to only buy acres and look at their cultural history. Not more than ten acres. Now with.
You have, you have just made first, here versus, this isn't the.
Was actually disrupt or prevent installation of the agricultural land management system. All that. Actually may result directly or indirectly in the increase. All the actions not consistent with the adopted municipal farming potential.
We do not.
So by this. Five months, I'm thinking about the practice, even how this will. So that would be a. Store in our geological. Starts with seven, we get all. Our one picked that up. Or it is.
Yeah, we would have had to. Do that.
In this stuff.
Yeah.
It's not in. It's sorry.
Ten or eleven. In back and. In space and recreation. On site. Critical environmental areas, twelve.
That's true. I mean, I, we have not yet.
Using. Number. Some. Using. Fifteen. Right.
That's because. We do have, like, fixed, you like, picture. A blast.
I think I got.
I think I went very long.
Action, you know, right. Now, we keep lighting. Sure that doesn't. And so. Skype. Sixteen.
Because we have, there, there's no existing or new source of contaminants. All sections. Is.
Good. Okay, so. Just double check.
And just for the record, we have done the initial part of a phase one investigation right now. No, that's the issue, we did do a back check on the permitting for the land application that was occurring there and everything. Notification.
It's seventeen. Or the only.
Yes, so for original, original concern is because it was land application. Pretty unique situation, we wanted to make sure that we checked on behalf of. My client that, you know, that permitting history is, is in order.
It's around seventeen consistency with.
You check this signal just because. Yeah, we adapt it as well. We adapt it. So there. Allow. Allow.
In our.
Well, if you talk about the, you talk about the general plan, since we've started, but. Everything you've done since that changes it, so this is.
Assistency with community character.
Reason we check, yes, for that. Reason we check yes for that.
So under under yes, they would get this half. Character of the area there. It's a small impact. So the motions would be accept secret see that it's a negative declaration. So
Okay.
If it be declaration, unlisted action. It's the uncoordinated here.
Joey Anderson.
Hi.
Yeah, must
I
younger and
All right. Next would be something this since a final site. I made a motion to accept this as a final site plan.
I wish I
I I'm Castro must you know, current
All right.
They had very
I'll I'll get this track about the paperwork. Yeah, simplest.
Anyone here on Highland Terrace?
We've all will will be based seventy eight percent safe close to southern or good addition. Going with anyone here? Well, I'm I'm
Um, last time you spoke, you could take questions on.
Very fine.
Is this going?
Yes, yes.
So we have the short this So we're going to be a secret review that will come on your side. We'll do a secret review first and then give it a just support members. We were members. Secret which is a short form. So ten pages is what we talked about. So I'm just going to read your this. But pause action create a material conflict be done to the ratings. Or Sony regulations that would be beauty shops pretty news as a song. Was act result change in user intensity and use of land. Just to slow it back. Don't decide to go. Small impact. Or action and bear the character of all the existence of the business. And for critical environmental areas. Was actually result in adverse change. Insisting above all traffic. Back the existing infrastructure of master of Viking. Action caused increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable available energy. The opportunity. This your state energy code. Well, that you that exists. Water supplies. That's so ever change batch resources. Well, that result finds of always funding or create its problems. It's possible to call creative job property. But was actually created sources. All right. So box turn each base about these sporting documentation both action. Now result in a significant adverse environmental impacts. Some just listed actions. That's much secret. So
seven.
Motion second discussion. On the world please.
Joe Wilkinson.
Hi.
We need Crandall. Angela Hocken. I'm Castro. At bust to call.
Thanks.
And current.
All right.
I was here. And we need a Google site plan. We need Washington. I mostly know from the site plan. That's submitted. Second, internal discussion. Call the
Joey Wilkinson.
Hi.
Crandall. Hocken. Castro. And bust to call. You know, current.
All right.
All right. Motion here. Good to go. And finally, under the new business. Maybe you don't know how to tell people process you are area of this accessory structure reviews. Sixteen by thirty two grad in front to one side of this construction. If anybody here. My just we're just recommending bodies to the water. So we're just sort of recommendation to them. Um.
I why the there is. So if I if the rear of my house is very steep built and require probably unreadable or and it's also where my subject systems present back here. It's my house is way back on the road.
It's like current fifty nine feet. So yeah, it's a wooded there.
Yeah, this is always. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's so yeah. Basically, where I planning, where I'd like to put this garage out even with my neighbors' house. It's not any bargains with their house. Pretty much when the woods are at least they can see their house or where this is not going to happen still. Forested area between the garage and the road. Probably twenty five feet.
Why? Why can't you attach the producer's garage?
So the existing garage has got a path where I store a large RP. It's about the only place I can store. Ryan moved that over and I have no access to the rear of the house.
Or if there's any questions.
Yeah. That'll ease us in the building. Just a garage. I got nice and hard to store in there. Tractors. Toys. No. You know, the general storage projects. Most my primary work. Project. Reason this here is front. Let's set back into the front of the property. From the house. You might go that. And he's back. It's like that in the center, but in the back. Still on the static. I'm talking to the back. Something's back there. So I I measured out over about thirty feet and about six foot drive. Oh, good. That destruction. No, I think about six. Okay, we'll well, probably that size. Slam upgrade. Any of the resources were or members, any recommendations positive or negative? So we this smoke. You have to build up that area. Better have raised up all eighteen twenty inches from on the corner. So is it smoke that you not that's lying around still basically same as when they have a small drive bit of actually they don't have
They'll be notified for public here.
So we're just recommending my negative or negative recommendations. So I feel parents. For positive recommendation. The motion is second for that. Motion is second for discussion. Call the
Hey, Joey Wilkinson.
Hi.
Who's Crandall? Angela Hocken. And Castro. Must to call.
Hi.
You know, current.
Hi.
I'm speaking.
All right. Motion here. We can get in the packet from
I've got it right here.
Okay, there you have it. Was one of the bills.
Or can be we should be able to send
Oh.
Everything's at the point.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
You're welcome.
So that's
All right. We're right along your business. Be seven ninety five. So I followed that with LLC. You said we all three applications. Two small scale. Major sword Russian system. That's something I
Be there. My name is Aaron. Yes, we'll be off this problem. Repetitive solar power networks. Uh, I'm gonna bore you. I guess it's solar. You just saw one still resonates. My project for that. But basically what we're looking at doing is utilize a decent open field. Look at ourselves. About nine acres. Structures to solar race. One of them will be point seven five megawatt. The other one would be just over one megawatt. Well, combined, we'd be just under two megawatts. So there'd be two separate parcels that will be dealt the same way. The purpose of site really was to get additional input from the board. Although there is solar ordinance, you know, some people have opinions of where they should be and how they should be screened and best suit locations. So really wanted to get some input from the board of the forward with the detailed plan of survey and everything else. You know, it's located on the west side of the church with the existing Pedro on the east side. We would be using trackers to orientate in north, south direction and follow the sun as it passes across the sky. There is, you know, some residents across the street on the north side of the road. And also a, you know, restaurant brewery located in the northwest corner. Some other on local police center northeast is off the page, but you know, makes of commercial and residential in the area. There are no wetlands on this parcel of a nine acre parcel. You know, some gold developer would utilize open spaces. So we're not, you know, they're cutting mature forests for these types of facilities. And also trying to avoid prime prime agricultural land because obviously it's all negative impacts associated with that also. So site really you know, to go with to, you know, get some input from board. If getting concerns or questions that may answer things that you'd like to see in order to move forward or whatnot, but I can come back to you. We're well prepared and in all good
Um, I did a phone back from four point. It looks like you're not even close to that. That's there's not when I first heard of this, I sure. So I I know see where based on your overlay.
The topography does slope with everyone towards south or they just broke off to the southeast corner. So it's nice there. Obviously, any runoff and directed off site. I'm sure you're familiar, you know, solar arrays or established state guidelines start their spacing other oriented. So the, you know, minimize the runoff and file the standard really the underlying soil really aren't changed by the development. Therefore, they don't really increase any runoff on the native farm.
What are you going to do with all their film that they
Yeah. Level off. Yeah, I mean, it's not the best thing. A lot of I know this with a lot of, you know, millings and asphalt millings. Right. Because obviously there's wood and everything. You're just like, yuck. Thank you for the warning. All right. So we've entered your purchase agreement for the property. So obviously, right? I mean, ideally, you know, when we're done, you know, the next is when we're done, it will all be cleaned up. It'll be all be grass. Obviously, we'll have to look at whether it's level off. If it's not usable, meaning right to a one piece of the concrete or other stuff that can't be you know, buried and top pulled over and reclaimed by the public. You know, buried and top pulled over and reclaimed by the public. We would clean it up.
So you're playing and getting back to the original. Height of the ground below all that fill?
I mean, really, the goal would be to kind of plan off. Establish a new top floor cover, you know, so it smooths it out, put top floor top of it, paint brown, you know, patch it up on top of that, so. Get a minimalize the cost for me.
What kind of grade can you? Uh put these things on?
Uh there is, there is a. How high would that be? Ten fifteen twenty P?
So you're talking about right now, there's like a one on one, right?
Yep, so that would be lessons, uh we've done them on landfill cap, for example, you know, what we have, you know, thirty percent slopes. Uh it makes it a little more difficult, so the idea is with a tracker system, ideally a perfect nice straight of row or straight. Row that rotates down the water, twist them all. Uh if you do upgrade, you have to break it up into two separate pieces of all the contour. Uh what we've done is steeped this thirty percent, but ideally we try to lessen, so it's more on the, you know, ten percent.
Is there any impact on the water treatment plan up there?
No, I mean, really, you know, they have minimal impact because, you know, if you drive basically, you know, a galvanized steel pile into the ground. And that's the supporting structure, that's so there's no real concrete foundation, you know, ground to service, which makes it easy to, to remove them when we're done, if we ever. Yeah, obviously we provide you decommissioning plan of the body of everything else, that, you know, this rather than before.
Now it's the cell phone tower affection.
It really doesn't, uh it's on the north side, so it really doesn't provide any shading, and it really is very.
I, I'm, I'm thinking more of ice and then the three coming off the tower.
Yeah, uh no, uh we looked at that and really it's, you know, we're far enough away from it that we don't see that as a potential hazard.
Clear that tower was built before we imposed the ball zones. So they're gonna be right inside what would have been a ball zone had that tower been built there. Well, no, it's trouble, I mean, ice, I've seen the ice come off the towers and blow. By the ways, before it hits the ground, so.
How, how do you plan to minimize the visual impact? On the panels? It's not a major worrying concern.
Yep, uh what we propose, uh what's nice is the road on the west side, uh so we can establish more repetitive screening or repetitive screening. Typically, we do a staggered row of eight, ten foot, but at plenty height. A mixture of planting, because we have a green and whatever, so we don't. Particularly like, like a solid hedge, you know, prison lake, you know, better soften that. Uh but gets on the north side, we're not worried about the shading that the trees have, so it gives us, you know, we actually can. Get a little closer to the rays and, you know, add additional screens, we can provide you, you know, visual uh. Rendering basically from the street when it's done, with the plant into the kind of satisfied, then obviously if you go up, there needs to be more, obviously, you know, every community. Has some different feels of what they like to see, uh but typically what we try to do, we try to do a very mix of kind of sand every dreams. We also try to put some ground cover, lower shrub, so it doesn't look too structured, and we try to basically create natural softness. Feel, so.
Uh how would you know, I guess we want to be truly starting grading, like you would know whether you would have to install some black.
Right, so really, it's, yeah, tonight is really big introduction, general feel for it. Uh you know, our comfort levels that hey, it's a project that did work in this community. What we would do next is obviously do the full boundary survey, topographic survey, look at all those issues, the great issues, we do geotechnics for, see what that material is, whether it's stable up the build on top of it, whether it has air moves. Yes, all those things would be, you know, so the idea is if I were to get this will feel, we'll be starting that scene. And all those. We'd obviously come back to you with much more detailed plans that would, you know, spell out.
When John in. Fifteen years ago, you know, I mean, you know. On the road out there and individual lots. What is the show, I forget, where the show?
Yep, so there are individual lots, so the idea, they all kind of like merge back together and then split into two. For our project.
These have to be something.
Right, so we, we combine them all then, something by together.
I'm looking at the map now, there's three small lots right along the north edge of it, right along the edge of it, the road. And then there's the big one that they wanna put the panels in.
Right, but at the beauty life in all of that land, so you have to merge it all back together. They do us some. Yep.
I'm gonna undo a subdivision. No. I don't know how we did that.
Somehow.
So, well, that's their problem, but that's a tax issue.
Yeah. Yeah, something is gonna be configuring all of it.
They can, they could, there's, what they're gonna do. Really is not a subdivision, as far as we're concerned. They want, they want separate tax lots and the assessor takes care of that. So. Because, and then if they change the ownership. Of the two, then they have a subdivision, but it's one to two and it's not gonna be.
Every, the intent of the two is nicer to have different setups for different type facilities.
The reason we have to have concept, you know. Two separate driveways and you can have two separate lines.
So they, they're two independent solar projects. On two separate tax carports, you know, two separate drivers, we still look at.
Why is, we don't have it over here?
We could combine. These roads, the single road and do power on both sides, but there would have to be separate, you know, frontages, so legal, you know, legal standalone laws.
Cause over here, they don't have, they only have one entrance for the two projects over here.
That's something we definitely look at, combine as that would minimize, you know, really the gravel roads around the brewery.
As the county, you're out of the county. Kind of a curcuma.
Right. The other issue is that. This does not take into consideration. Easement out there for a levy that runs out through the, a larger section. Of the western. Project. Um that ties into there, um that's one of the things you need. Look into, and also there is a residential on that corner too, you know, next to the. And they're gonna get it heavily impacted by this. Uh with the levy and all that type of thing. In there, that may actually protect. You may situation somewhat in a situation, but it's gonna take. You know, some of that. And I'll use to Jerry out because I believe that's because of the easement that's, that's. In that lesson.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we, for the, with the uh survey, we'll have that checked out. So you can find that, you find it better and. Exactly, it's something I, you know, the title issue that we have to.
Then it takes it easy. What temporary easement or permanent?
They extended there, they, they worked on it, they extended it down to there, yeah, it's a very long side. Behind the house.
Right, it stops to see the steel, we don't, we're sorry, right, why?
It's still part of first, this is land, it just gives you setback.
Yeah, they had, they almost had to take that as a, I know that. Wasn't one of the. Issues.
But the, this side of race. The uh, the mapping has to be. Change.
There should be, there should be. Uh. When he does his, when he does his uh research or the, the mapping. Uh the actual survey, they should show up at that. But I mean, just.
Just he's.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, first is still all of all that, and it's just, they can't build anything on it. Right, right, yeah, there's a flat in the bottom, all that, so. I mean, it was. It was tough to build in there, but, but it was, there was easement. And it's tough to get the bulldozer all the way to the bottom of it, thing, push the material back up. But. Are these panels? Um one of the things that are coded is the height requirement. In our previous project and all that, so we had to create a waiver. I think our maximum weight that ours is fifteen P or. The indoors, are you gonna, we would be below that. Okay, yeah. And we don't.
Traffic channels that call, tell, where they go off.
Uh the one we'll look at right now or not? We would, our goal is not to seek any variance at all, I mean, for compliance with all your. Our, our design is a two panel line, so the, right, let me go to single panel.
Really?
On that side. You know. But I definitely have that. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do, you know, sort of come back to people points, really, get a gold sign, just to kind of get a feeling. Like I said, some communities that have solar, you know, even if they have solar or. Some word, you know, building meets their max and or, you know. I would say where they are best, you know, permitted and others, so we just want to make sure that same feature hurdles.
No action to take it today, who has to carry us for next month's agenda or?
Uh I mean, realistically, by the time we go, if anything, we'll be far within a month.
Okay.
Uh so obviously, really.
We'll take you off and then.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Hey, this is city night, Eric Nelson, looking for hill drives, area variance. I see thirty one sixty feet, relief from the point four required.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Lawrence. I'm with the.
Don't know what, what chapter.
So the owners would like to uh make a small addition to their single family works, like moving for a new guy. The structure currently is about eight hundred eighty hundred. Were feet on a twenty five four acre site. Uh we're gonna be adding about seventeen. Approximately in the front, extend the room and. And also in the, and then also in the back, uh in our nature square foot, new mattress bedroom. Actually, nothing.
Right, it's a, it looks like you're in the back, they need to pretty close up there.
No, you're not in that side.
So.
That's stuff that we're asking for consideration of the existing. To the I could get inside your. As, as long as you're in line, you don't, as long as you stay in line, it don't impact more. We don't, we don't have issues. Uh so in the application, uh. As far as the practical difficulties. Uh the position. I don't know. So, no, no. No place to expand except for the street. And that the president's loan A is the during the quality interference established, you the intensity. Never been in a manic and powerful direction to be existing at all. I know this, but. Still be one thirty foot. But there are existing neighbors. Real close, that have, much less.
You say that some of the neighbors are, are not forty feet.
Are not forty feet, sure. There it is, in fact. I just did a quick look on Google. Uh and it's, uh the. Nineteen Robert Road. Uh not the starways, it's about thirty two feet. One twenty nine local road. Remember Robert, Robert is nineteen fifty's. Construction.
Yeah, about Ferndale Drive, where we're doing.
Yeah. There, uh otherwise. The nine middle road, which is right, actually within fifty yards of. Correct. Again. Again, when, when I, when I moved up there in fifty nine, it was already there. The zoning only came in in fifty one.
But it is there.
Uh yes. Uh. The, the requesting an area variance for this, which is not, there's, there's two types of variances, as you probably may know. Use an area variance, area variance. Uh used to have a, a practical difficulty standard, which was taken out years ago. So now the, the board in, in considering an area variance. You, you're supposed to take into consideration, this is what the zoning board appeals is going to apply, so making your recommendation, you should realize. That the zoning board of fields gonna take into consideration the benefit to the applicant. If the variance is granted as weighed against the detriment. To the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. Uh and considering those, they have, they get to consider five factors. Whether there'll be an undesirable change in the neighborhood, in the character of the neighborhood. Uh or a detriment to nearby properties. Uh whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method. Uh feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance, which probably that's not know in this case. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. So they're talking about approximately ten feet, so twenty five percent. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact. On the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And what, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. All these things can be considered, all do not have to be answered in a positive manner. And uh the self-created. Portion, if this was a use variance. That would be completely prohibited, because the variance couldn't be issued if it's self-created. For a use variance, for an area variance is just another consideration. Uh plus the board is supposed to, the zoning board of fields will. Will theoretically grant. Uh the minimum variance necessary to. You get the uh. Get the applicant what they desire, protecting the neighborhood, the character of our. So. Those are the things that you should be aware of, now you're gonna say, why didn't you bring that up last, at the last? Their question, anybody had that question? The reason being. He wasn't asking for a variance from any kind of setbacks, because. His setbacks, his, his, where he was building was more than forty feet from the front. He had the side setbacks, he was all right, his consideration was just whether where he could build it. That if he could build it, he could build it, so. But this one's a little different, because now this'll, this'll push out thirty feet. And you have the other houses, which. The question becomes. If each one of them comes in for an area variance, they're gonna get it, if, if this is granted. So should this be a variance, or should this be an application to the? To the town board to request. Uh reduction of the frontage for Burndale from forty to thirty. And both are equally the same, it really doesn't matter between.
So. It looks like they're asking for seven feet out, well, the kitchen. Right?
That's right.
So right now, the house is not at forty four seven.
That's right.
So, right, so we're at. Thirty seven.
Good question. I'm looking at this on the, on the mapping tool. And how accurate are the property lines on this mapping tool?
I know.
Okay.
As you make it bigger, as you make it bigger and smaller, those are gonna.
Okay, you gotta look at it right now and have, and like a, a quarter of the driveway is on the north side of the property line.
We got a rounder than the plan. We got a wrong difference in the plan there.
Okay, all right, that's all, that's all, that answers a lot.
If you sit on the road, look down through Burndale. The properties on, on this relatively straight in front of their product. Yeah, it's, so this is going to. Stick out. Amongst them.
And it will be affected, we'll have an opportunity public hearing. Uh, as we, as we discovered in one place, when we had to give a variance of this sort. The neighbor was not happy because now they couldn't see down the road. That was in a commercial. Yeah, that was clearly obvious, you know, front drive by it.
And it is thirty point eight, so. Is it the thirty one, you close the ground or I don't know. I wanna put a couple stakes in the ground. Slower than somewhere would be. So neighbors. The impact. How old the bucket. Somebody else, I think, that's terrible. Or whatever.
Would be a nice way to expand those, be able to expand those houses over there. It's reasonable sizes that were never put in.
Yeah, that was.
You could make, put it in the garage, we don't know you have a garage. You know, if you let, if you get showing the guy, spend a little expense on that garage, I know everyone to go with that.
You probably wanna stay there and you don't wanna move.
Yeah, it's a good plan. Yeah.
So could you clarify for us? What will the process be?
This board makes a recommendation. That goes to the zoning board of appeals, zoning board of appeals, if they're gonna hand you a packet right now, it's August tenth at seven P M. And, uh, they will give you the packet, you will mail to all of your neighbors. Within a certain distance and the public hearing will be held that night. And then the board of appeals will. Uh, consider it and approve.
Is this, is this same group on the board of appeals?
No, no, yeah, different board.
So board members. What's your positive or negative recommendation as I work with deals?
Nobody else, I'm, I've been busy. Oh, thanks. I recommend for a positive recommendation to the board of appeals.
Now, second motion is second. Any further discussion? Call the world.
Joe Anthonyson.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, Angela Hawkins, Ken Castro. Yeah, Mustico.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
All right.
All right, motion here. Want to go back and.
Explains.
That will be done in the question. Actually, area variance is still be that.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll be right along. Jordy Buckley. Ready one for the certain micro site line you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Five fifty yard numbers. Um, one hundred fifty grounds. Uh, fifty yard tail on the history oil.
So, so you know where we are, right? Thirty one fifty seven Lake Road. Um, aerial map here, the old Ames Plaza crossway. Uh, Bear World to the, to the north. What we're trying to do here is construct a two-way driveway twenty four feet wide. It is, it would be the second driveway in the, in the parcel, but, um, there's evidence out there of an existing driveway. There's a whole photographs evidently, uh, certainly not mentioned that there, there was a driveway there at El Point. Um, but, uh, go out there right now, um, curb extends straight through, so technically. Be another curb cut.
Well, there is. Have you?
Not yet, no, no. But, uh, obviously, you know, this goes with accounting, you'll. You'll see it, um, what I did on the site plan anyway is, um. Um, just to show where that driveway would go, typically the county wants to see. At least the, uh, entrance state print into the establishment up to the right of way be paved. Um, and then, uh, the remaining could be gravel, so that's how it's proposed right now. Trying to save an existing tree that's right here at the front of the building. Tree has a, a, a pretty large canopy and, um, the. The goal, when you're up against a property line here is that the, the, um, the radius of the driveway has to be. Inside the property line so that the point at the street. Where it meets the existing road, um, has to be within the property line, so. Um, be over that much and to have it be a two-way twenty four foot wide drive, um, that tree would have to be removed. The driveway would meet up with an existing asphalt, um, driveway and parking lot within here where the, uh, primary buildings here that, uh. Jordan was just talking about here was the man. There's an existing driveway opening here where pretty much every vehicle would, um, right now enters and exits the, the property. So the, uh, the goal is, again, just to, just to construct this, this driveway, um. There's, there's no driveways across, across Lake Road, um. Ames Plaza does have their, their entrance, um, to the west or excuse me, to the north. And, um. We, uh. The, um. The driveway distances here. Um, at the road itself would be seventy five feet. From the radius to the opening of the next driveway, so. And that's one of the things that, um, you know, Andy will consider when he's, he's looking at it, but, um, this driveway. Entrance itself was designed to be O T. Um, commercial driveway standards, thirty three foot, uh, radius. And, um. A twenty four foot wide to.
We probably, yeah, we do, do we say this is just. Amendment to the existing site plan?
Send it down to the county.
We even send it because it's not.
Well, this, this curve is, they've removed the curve all the way from, when they did the water lines, all the way from the air world. All the way past being on my other store, it's gone. So it just goes right out there, there's no curve that's gone.
Well, we don't care about that.
Well, I mean, I didn't know they.
We only, we only care what's on the property, we don't care what's off the property, so that's Andy Avery's issue.
Okay.
We can get you to the property line, we can't get you to the road.
Road, yeah, okay.
You, you gotta go to him, yeah, to get permission to go to the road, yeah.
Since it's not building construction, doing this. Accepted as a modification to their existing site plan.
Yeah.
I would.
So then the driveway itself will be the driveway permit through Andy, Andy, just the, instead of.
Send it to the county planning, you know, it's not. Any or new construction or addition. And.
And we, we, we wouldn't issue a building permit for it, we'd issue, um. Driveway permit for it.
We wouldn't.
And I'm hoping Greg is gonna shake his head yes, no?
No, because it's county, I would, I don't even really.
No, no, we just issue a driveway permit for, on their property. They need a curb cut permit from, from the county. We don't, we wouldn't issue a building permit for it.
I would only thought that we would be issuing driveway. Permits for when they go to the condo. Like, this kind of is baffling to me.
Yeah.
It's one of those situations where. Our approval is only minor compared to what Andy's.
Right.
Authority is up to it.
Yeah.
Um. So it's, it's, you know, everything kind of hinges on, will the county allow you a secondary driveway?
Yeah.
Typically with the state, when, when I would work with the state, they would not allow you that.
Well, the thing is, is there's three addresses here, only one access door. This is bed driveways, you can see if you go behind the brick building. And driveway's left there and then they cut it off, so you literally strip that top soil off and then it's the old driveway that went around. When it was edge or whatever, they just planted grass in there, the driveway is there, but it stopped right in the corner that go. So that was the access to get around here. He had it on, it was all his and it's all mine now, so they, they just closed that off and drove into the one. So actually Bobby Oster and there's three address, the three addresses that I own and Bobby Oster and one driveway.
Yeah, but it's.
The addresses aren't control, the addresses aren't controlling, the ownership of the property is controlling. And if it's contiguous, it's just one front inch of that stuff, but what I say is, I can't see why we can't just. If the board thinks it's okay, prove it as a modification of their existing site plan and then you're, you can deal with, uh. You can deal with Andy instead of, as to what he'll do.
Yeah, okay. Cause what Bobcat wants to do is it's safer putting up the driver tractor trailer and unload it and then drive out. They're trying to jimmy around and get that out of there, that's what's big. The big issue.
But that's the one thing I'll, I can show him with the truck turn.
Yeah.
Diagrams, you know, if everything that's there, be able to turn the truck around and you get it out safely, it's just that.
That's grass in that area right now?
Well, half and half, the driveway's behind the house, but then they cut it off. They planted grass. It means to me, I mean, there's.
So there's a driveway.
There's a driveway there.
Yeah, me?
Yeah. And there in the house.
Why wouldn't you put asphalt?
Well, I would love to put asphalt in there, but Bobcat wants me to put gravel because they're very rough on equipment when they turn it, they'll, it tears it up. So we'll do whatever the county requires. And then I was gonna put all the asphalt in the whole place and they said, don't do it, just put gravel in the holes because we're gonna destroy it. And there was there one day and oh, it smokes, yeah. There's no way to move that equipment without, it's gonna tear it off. So I would just gravel from the existing pavement to whatever the county says, that'd be gravel. And then if they ever leave, I'm, I would pay the whole thing. I'm gonna pay the whole thing. The property, the property, what I was gonna use it for is what is not happening, I want to use, I wanted to make a rental, so.
So they don't put their, none of the bobcats or anything or other, it's other part, they can do anything on that?
No, they have them there, but they, they, right now their road is, is clear where it's gonna be, where the bobcats are sitting, you know, away from where the road will be.
No, I'm saying that they don't, they don't use any of the asphalt.
No, because they're using that to jimmy around and get the trucks back out. And they can, once they get the road in there, they can stay back at the front of the fence to put up, but right now they can't because that's how they're jimmying things around it.
Yeah, and one of the things that might actually help. I'm not sure, yeah. Is to actually have a, uh, show a truck turning radius and.
Tell us, I'll, I'll do for Andy, at least to, to show him.
Andy's, Andy probably, we wouldn't consider that as much as we would.
Yep.
Um, for us to see a, a truck turning template. Put on there showing that, you know, how much, how much work there is right now for a tractor trailer to turn around in there and how much it'll be.
It makes sense to have one ten and one out.
It's kind of the way it's gonna be, yeah, this is gonna be in the end and that's the out.
Right, yeah.
It's might be a better. Right now, I think they probably, they probably back right out of like.
Cause that, that might be a better selling point to Andy.
Yeah, if you don't have four accesses.
Yeah, you don't have people coming out of all.
Yeah.
Coming out of one.
I'll fix like gravel ones.
Yeah, I just saw the process now here, I'm the second sheet for, um. What you, you require to do in the right way and then. What they can. Transition seventeen. Yeah, so right now it's. All underneath the asphalt and then, um, basically just keeping the same box, I, you know. I said only twelve inches is needed. But, um, you know, when you're out there boxing out the driveway, you know, it might be easier just to, just to keep it, you know, warm straight through.
This is a. Modification of existing site plan. So we invited the second, uh, second as a modified site plan, um, it should be existing site. Or, you know, in time.
Okay.
And you start off with the boot there and it was stopped. The motion second, we want to see current, this has already been done. Doesn't, any threshold required, so motion second.
So. I'll make motion that this thing be approved, uh, with the restriction that the county highway department approves the entrance. Second.
Your motion second. Any further discussion? Call the world.
So we have Joe Anthonyson.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, Angela Hawkins, Ken Castro, yeah, Mustico, Alan Curran.
All right, motion Gary, you know, stay here. Give me right back there.
Yeah. You remember what you're here for?
Area variance. Stretch of accessory building. In his side yard, in the rear yard. Then I. So doctor was, why do you gotta put it there?
So what I was looking to do, uh. Sounds like I'm in the same boat, Mr. Key was earlier, uh. Was looking to construct a. Good car garage for. Customer I build a home for, if I don't go back to two thousand fifty, so, uh, I submitted the prints to the code office. And, um, wasn't aware that everything's. Any accessory building would to be. Uh, totally behind. So that's when, uh. Great, only we'd have to come to, uh. You know, there it is still. One of the biggest reasons is, um. The grade up there, you, from there a little hill drops, you know, pretty quick in a hurry, uh, but the bigger concern is when I built that house, the subject system. Is directly off the. Southwest corner of the house and then goes down the hill. And, uh, then a leach field. So, I forget how big that leach field is, but, um, you have to leave. The same size accessible for another leach field, whatever, you know. Plus they have a in-ground pool directly behind the house and there's, the, the yard only goes back about as far as, uh, you can see where there's a shed, uh, placed. Back behind the house on the new plot. Once you get to that point, it's kind of a cliff in the woods, drop right down over the hill to, uh, fourteen. So there's really not any. Spades out back.
Andrew don't want to attach it to the house, I'm sorry, can't or don't want to attend, but rather not, no.
This is. These are for side art. Encourages in the.
Right, right. Property stretched down the victory road.
And also.
I think there's uh some other people up there, but the same issue because direct, almost directly across the street at two twenty. Uh, hotel. Two car garage.
Okay.
Oh, that's not, well, Molina doesn't own it.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, there it is, you know.
Doctors and attorneys.
All right, Pete. Board, which pleasure? I mean, we make a positive presentation. Going more, okay, need a second, second.
All right.
All right, motion carried.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you, and I make a suggestion. To plan it for. When we have projects that are this tight, that we ask to base below the. Picture up to the point where we can actually read it.
We may be existing.
I realize that, but. The micro, the micro writing in this is. Is getting caught. Even when you zoom in on it on your computer, it looks kinda, you know, it's up for read.
Is anybody here for Journey Church?
The last one should be. Quick and then we can come back to that.
Okay.
This is a little chunk of property. Down where the road comes in from the new round up down there. And where all the uh. The, the red. Things sat a year's. Apparently part of that is in the town. Nobody's ever really. Know that probably. But it's in the town and it's residence B. But it's part of the property that's in the uh. In the, you know, the, the holding point for the village, so. It's just this, we just want to change it residence B with industrial manufacturing, so it conforms to what. So what it's used for and.
They wanna put shipping containers in there?
Then, yeah, basically what's been there, it's containers have gone in and out, the same thing.
If we make it industrial though, doesn't that open up just in the future, somebody putting something in there that the neighbors might not like? Should we maybe do a PUD instead?
No, we don't have, we don't have enough land to do a PUD after the open three D.
Okay, I was just thinking if we.
Everybody down that whole road is residence B and behind it is this.
And a part of the property is, is, there's no access, but it's all off a street line. And it's more likely it's ever gonna be used. Is continued with the property that's. Just thinking when I read industrial, you, you can be fabricating metal, you could be doing all kinds of stuff in there. We did us like a small PUD, we could just say. You only put containers in there. And truthfully, the village would. Could do that type of thing and eighty-nine percent of this is still gonna be seen or. Influenced by them. It's just a, a situation where the property like.
What I read is it looks like they want to put two hundred and sixty.
Basically use it for about what it was used, it's been used for. Same but different, but it's movable stuff in and out.
So we just need a recommendation. For residence B to do on industrial everything. Through the town board, right?
Okay. Yeah, it's gonna happen. Our recommendation is to go. Change it.
Once they get the recommendation.
They'll have to go to the town and the village.
Yep.
Who's second?
Two sixty D Journey Church, one sixteen Griesport Road. They have everybody from the church.
You got any church? You're just here about the church. Yeah. They didn't show up. Uh, where we are. With the church. And I had the two of them in front of me and I told them this is the meeting. Is that they have approval for uh PUD. Years ago, they had the church and then they wanted to build that expansion and they wanted to use it for other things. So what we did was we paid it a planned unit development so that the town could control what's going in there. Uh, say we haven't done a good job is probably another statement. They were granted. A, a planned unit development to operate. Uh, com- commercial professional offices. As well as do church things that are allowed to be done as a church. And what any other church would do with the community building or anything like that. As life progressed. It appeared that they have. Expanded their ideas of what a church should do as far as. We were concerned and have become. Uh, uh, more commercial operation. With their concerts, their. Venue. Issues there, I mean, if you see their advertisement for weddings and such, which. You know, weddings is such what a church does, but these are uh. These are on, on, on a different level at that point in time. Uh, installing a uh. Fitness center. Membership fitness center, a barber shop. And now seemingly putting in a restaurant or cafe of some sort or another. So we finally got them to make an application. Uh, to, to commit to amend their PUD and said. You know. Now. And uh so we can, we can get this stuff. I guess from our perspective, under control. Uh, rather than uh taking them. Add into an item, which is what we've started doing. And uh we'll do as far as uh. Uh, dealing with, with their issues. But they're not here, we can't do that. So. Yes. Yes, we will do that and we will reinforce with them. Greg, we'll look at pulling that building or their, their operating permit too. I don't think we did that, did we?
Uh, yeah, so we, uh, they, they do have an operating permit, but it specifically says on it. Only approved uses. So at this point in time. They would theoretically be. Uh, operating outside their operating permit, which opens the door for us to continue ticketing. So.
Was that under the, that they actually, all they had to do was. Submit for approval, which by not showing up like. Valid or invalidates their. Their application.
Well, we've got their application.
But I think that's all that really says in that letter is that they actually would apply.
Yeah, so uh. So uh. Well, I met with them personally because I told them they didn't have to appear at the town board meeting. At the end of last month because it was just gonna be a referral. And uh that, that the meetings they have to come to is this. You guys will at least have another meeting with regard to it in August now, obviously you will. And uh then I would take it to the town board. At their August meeting, the public, the public hearing in September, and then that would give you your, your September meeting. To clean up any, any uh recommendation you may be making to the town board at that point in time. Uh. We will, Greg, we will. Communicate again.
Yeah, for sure, yep.
And uh. And uh. I don't know. I wish I did. Yes. If not, then we're gonna have. We'll uh continue with the court proceedings.
We get any information now? We discussed some of this now. As a board. Or we have to wait for that to be here?
Well. No, you could discuss it if you want. I mean, that, that, I mean, it's on the agenda, you could discuss it. As to what you wanna see now.
My question is. I, I sat with Greg earlier today and everything like that type of thing and I gave you some information. It is still quite vague. For what the application, their application is. For, um, because. In looking at the previous PUD and everything like that. It states semi what is required or what is acceptable. And it's. To me, it's not. Defined enough. To actually make the balance decision on. With one, with whatever the town that the board is actually. Approved and or what your discussions have.
No, we.
What's gonna be allowed there and everything like that?
The previous, the previous PUD was very clear. They had, they do commercial, commercial offices.
Professional, commercial, professional lots.
And licensed, licensed professionals.
Right.
Yeah, so that was very clear.
Right.
What's, what's, what's unclear and what we need them for is a number of things. One, who's the players? The property is owned by Journey Church Inc. But as you see out there, they're talking about the, the L. They also have a thing, they also have a thing called Journey Center Inc. They have I Matters, they have the Harvest Something or Another Cafe. I don't know what they call the barber shop and I don't know what they call the fitness center.
But it also states in that PUD that it, it is only. What is allowed is what is in the plan, the residential aid.
Well, in, in addition to residential aid, they were allowed commercial offices.
Correct.
That's what the PUD is for.
And obviously they've gone beyond that.
Obviously they don't.
We need a.
No, no, we have nothing. I mean, Greg, they've been there and done inspections, so they know. Where things are.
Yeah, but they don't have a layout. We need a layout.
Yeah, we have, so as far as layout is concerned, we have. Um, you know, the original building plan. So we've marked that up to show where things are. They have all their emergency evacuation plans for each separate. Well, rentable office and each, you know. Uh, the fitness center has its evacuation plan on the door that, you know, we have all of that stuff. Um, so we know where things are. Um. As far as, you know, fire code is concerned, we've worked pretty hard to get them. Into compliance, it's now more of um, you know, the use and. You know, then it gets tricky with, you know. What you consider a church use and you know, that's where the big. Discussion comes in with them is, you know. Uh, the, the definition of a church has evolved. Um. Which, you know. Not a concert venue, not. A restaurant where you can order food, uh. Not a, a pay-for membership gym. Not a pay-for barber shop. Um.
They may permit. Um, for the cafe.
The, what'd you say, Tom? You got a little uh.
Give them a permit for the cafe.
Did the health department?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
He did the, the health department discuss first.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, we knew there was a kitchen there the whole time. So the kitchen has been approved and the food they serve there has been approved, but. Initially, it was only for. Sunday, you know. Brunch church service stuff. Again, it's evolved to this extra. Thing.
So, nothing says about this elderly. Other things, they're talking about a pre-K or something like that?
Yeah, their letter basically only talks about a prepay and that type of stuff. It doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah, and, and that's why it's gonna be beneficial to have them here.
Do that, right, that's true, yeah.
So that's not even an issue. The, the school is not even an issue.
It's not an issue, right?
Cause they can do that.
And that's allowed in rezay. Well, would be.
The schools allow, yeah, the schools allow, and then you just have to deal with the building issues or the inspection.
Right, it's all these, it's all these things that would work. If, well, take the restaurant for example, or the cafe. Yeah, you know, you, you would see a church, most churches have kitchens. Um, it's just. They expand and go. Over what we view as a church kitchen. Um. You know, last, last time I was there, the cafe was not open though. Uh, and that was just during the day, you know, two o'clock in the afternoon, it wasn't open. Uh, so. You know, again, a good question for them, you know, how is that thing operating?
We need them here.
Yeah.
We, we had a. At, at the last uh, at the last court, we had just had him in on the noise complaints, correct? We didn't, we didn't take the. We didn't take them, taken them for the uh. Operating permit violation yet, or did we?
We did not because they made application.
Right.
Um, but now, because our operating permit for them is very specific. With only approved uses. That's why we did that to open the door, so. If they didn't, well, take for tonight, for example, if they didn't show up.
And getting that ticketed now, yeah.
Yep, yeah, and that's why we did that, so.
Very good. That's the other part of this too, is that. The noise issues and all that type of thing, consider a bit of. Limitations and or that type of thing. On that.
Yeah, I mean.
Times are violent or.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I, I. Well, we, we keep talking about them, we wanna get us. Well, we we keep talking about them, we wanna get the. Uh some sort of guy who knows that stuff because. A lot of the issues with noise is that the the base of some of those things, so it's it's not so much the decibels as it is the frequency, it's just. It just bumps, I mean.
Who controls like the pair and all that type of thing? They have a, they have a time restriction, but I don't. I believe. We could put, well, dude.
Well, this is P U D, so I think we could, we could put, we could put time restrictions on that, they couldn't generally.
As a case law says, you can't limit hours of operation.
Without limiting everybody else, but this is not, we're not, we're not limiting. We're not limiting a business in a business zone without limiting all the other businesses. This is a P U D, so this is their zone. So I believe that we can do it here.
This question is, right, fast food place, you know, some, this valley say you better shut down drive through at eight o'clock. Right. Seventy-one four hours, so in that's. Case law stuff.
Yeah, as long as everyone has to do it, it's fine.
Right.
But you can't say, well, this fast food place is closer to this neighborhood, so they've gotta shut down, but these people over here, right downtown, don't, you know.
And we do have in the area places that are like that, like they say, the fair enough when they have running. Their truck shows and all that type of thing, uh tags. Uh I don't know what Big Class has uh as far as noise ordinance type of thing, um. Something like that. That's out there, and I know. Uh outlaw Speedway and all that type of thing, they've got noise ordinances. Uh where they have to shut down for. At a certain hour because of the, you know, the community, that's that part of the community. Um and that's what they use us for.
John, I is the L. How would that consider the church function? Is that gonna be promoter? Cause there the bands that they have, there are heavy metal.
That's we gotta find out who the players are.
So again, when I read their letter with about outreach to the community and I don't know, I've watched the people go, yeah, I don't know how that is.
Yeah.
There are people coming from all over.
Exactly.
My thoughts are too, this is a concert, it is metal, is there security there? Is there an ambulance there?
There, the case law that I've read is they could have a concert series, okay? Any church could have a concert series. Now, what type of music that'd be, but this isn't that. This is a business being operated and some outfit out of Buffalo's putting all these things together and. Pushing them in here. As they pass through, I I assume they're doing a similar thing like Tags does where, you know, the bands are going from here to here to here, so geez, we can get them into Little on Wire up for a for a night. You know, that's why you see them on odd nights, you don't see them on Saturday nights, you don't see them on Friday nights, Wednesday nights. But.
Isn't one of the promoters, uh the guy that owns the Turtle League Cafe down in the wire?
He doesn't own it anymore, but I, he's one, he's one of the operators, so chime in, you guys, you might, you might know more than we do.
He does, he does both the heck.
Yes. Damn much, yeah, there. But he doesn't own Turtle League anymore.
I believe the promoter.
Please make more.
I don't, I don't know that he's to promote it, right? I think he works for the church. More.
But it's a business for the church.
It's a business, exactly.
It's a business, actually, it's a business. Running out a church.
That's, yeah.
Right, that's the difference between it being a church function and a business being rented out through a church.
Right, and if they're gonna have concerts, then they should be about the church.
Got a question. Uh. You you guys don't, I I assume you don't care whether this is on the record or not right now, why don't you guys adjourn? Tina, Tina, you know, Tina Amanda can go on, we wanna sit around, talk about it, we can't. So.
I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Bad stuff.
Thank you, you're a sweetheart.
They all said.
Nice to meet you guys.